My wife told me, she said.
All right. Think we're going.
Almost it's.
Almost.
Okay, we're good.
Okay, so we will go ahead and start city council business meeting for Thursday, October 15th, 2020. It is 6:02 PM. Lindsey, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Lester.
I think he muted himself here.
Here.
Baker.
Here.
Reba. Cool.
Here.
Livingston.
Here.
All right, we do have a forum. We'll move on. So this meeting of the council on October 15th, 2020 is being held both in person and electronically. Governor Reynolds issued the state of public health disaster affected June 2020 that removed limits on gathering, but physical distancing limits are still in place. I issued a proclamation of emergency effective May 15th, 2020 that opened up our public buildings. However, due to limits on physical distancing, it is impossible to have everybody present here at city hall. The city has installed audio video equipment in our council chambers, so this meeting will be conducted both in person and electronically. While I believe this was already allowed, the general public is welcome to attend our city council meetings. We have chairs spaced appropriately in city council chambers, and if we exceed the capacity of the room, we will ask additional attendings to join the Zoom meeting. Also, we have a temperature screening device set up at the front door to city hall, and we're asking anyone and everyone to take a temperature scan prior to entering council chambers. If someone's temperature is above normal, we will direct that person to leave the building and to join our Zoom meeting. To allow additional space for the public, I've asked those department heads that aren't presenting at the meeting to attend via the Zoom meeting, and I think they do appreciate this much more than they should. I said that last time, I'll say it again, too. If you are someone that is more susceptible to COVID-19, please consider attending via Zoom. There are going to be times during a meeting when we're going to fall back into normal behaviors and we're going to get closer to each other than six feet. If someone gets close enough to make you feel uncomfortable, please say so. I know I'm not going to be offended if you ask me to back up a bit. I hope nobody else here gets offended with someone trying to protect their own health. As with all electronic meetings, there may be some technical glitches. We may talk over each other, and there could be a bunch of other issues that occur during our meeting tonight. I just ask that we all be patient and respectful with each other as we conduct this meeting. For those on the Zoom meeting, you'll notice that your microphones are muted and that you probably can't unmute your mic. If you want to speak to an agenda item, please let us know when that item comes up, and we'll unmute your microphone during public comment. You can let us know by either raising your Zoom hand or by flagging us in the chat box. You'll notice that you'll need you needed to be allowed into the meeting tonight. If you're disruptive, we'll give you a warning and ask you to stop being disruptive. If you are still disruptive after the warning, we will remove you from this meeting and you will not be allowed back in. This is what would happen with a full in-person meeting, so this really isn't a change to any of our procedures. We're streaming this meeting through YouTube. We believe YouTube provides the ability for a much broader audience to view our meetings. You'll find the ability to comment to the YouTube meeting has been turned off, and this is being done so that we don't have a meeting going on within a meeting. We're recording this meeting, so please act accordingly. Finally, I'm only human, and I may miss recognizing someone, especially just because of everything that's going on. If that happens, please interrupt me via the chat box. I will not be offended at all if you do. So our next item is on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Would anybody like to move any of the consent agenda items to the regular agenda?
I would like to comment on a couple of agenda items. Can I do that now?
Of the consent agenda?
Yeah, without removing them, just to comment that I appreciate the work the staff did on the mutual aid agreements and being able to have those had a resolution.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, and I move.
All right. I got a second.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same, I think. David and Jackie, just shake your head yes or no, Jackie. There you go.
Let the record be flat.
The council member shook her head and up and down motion.
David's on the Zoom meeting, so.
Yes, I agree. Sorry, I couldn't get unmuted.
Okay, so if you mute yourself, you're not going to be able to unmute yourself.
I'll get Jackie unmuted.
What's that?
I'm going to get Jackie unmuted.
Okay. So agenda passes, and so next is welcome guests on public comment. This is for non-agenda items. We'll give you a three-minute time limit. Either raise your hand or make a comment in the chat box if you would like to comment. These, we can't take action on these tonight since they aren't on the agenda. Also, if you'd like to comment on any item in the consent agenda, now would be the time. I don't really see anybody wanting to speak, so we will move on. There we go. So next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. So we have approved the October 1st 2020 minutes of the regular city council meeting, have expenditures, tax abatements, renewal of Class C liquor license with Sunday sales for Get and Go Convenience Store number 20. As for November 18th, 2020 to November 17th, 2021, we have a renewal of Class C liquor license with outdoor service and Sunday sales for Warrior Run Garden December 1st, 2020 to November 30th, 2021. We have a resolution approving pay estimate number one to Elder Corporation for the Mackinich Sports Complex East Parking Lot Improvements Project. Have a resolution to approve pay estimate number two to Concrete Professionals for Highway 28 and Colonial Parkway Trail. Resolution to approve pay estimate number seven to Snyder and Associates for professional services related to Highway 28 and Colonial Parkway Trail improvements. We have a resolution approving fire and emergency medical services contract agreement pursuant to Iowa Code Section 28E between the City of Coming, Iowa and Norwalk, Iowa. Have a resolution approving fire and emergency medical services contract agreement pursuant to Iowa Code Section 28E between the City of Spring Hill, Iowa and the City of Norwalk, Iowa. Have a resolution setting November 5th, 2020 for a public hearing regarding an ordinance to establish the Stormwater Advisory Committee. We have a resolution setting November 5th, 2020 for a public hearing regarding an. Got it. I got it. Okay. We have a resolution setting November 5th, 2020 for a public hearing regarding a comprehensive plan amendment to change the future land use at 4089 R-57 Highway from medium density residential to future low density residential. We have a resolution approving commercial improvement grant program payment to Amory Pet Boutique in the amount of $5,064.28, and we have our monthly reports. Can I get a motion?
Motion. Second.
All right. Lindsey, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Lester.
I hit accept. He does not have his.
Have a microphone on.
Right.
Okay.
David, I don't suppose you have access to the chat? You could note your vote that way?
You give a thumbs up or don't?
No, I think he connected.
Oh, there he is. Now he's connected. All right.
Okay. So David, resolution, motion was to approve the consent agenda. Yes or no?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Baker.
Yes.
Cool.
Yeah.
Livingston.
Yes.
All right. We got through that one. So motion carries. All right, item five, we're going to go through old and new business for consideration discussion and possible action. Item A is a resolution approving the preliminary plat site plan of Shadow Creek Estates Town Homes Plat 1. So Shadow Creek Estates is a development being done by signature. Luke, would you bring up the map? And Luke Paris, I will turn this over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. This project is for approval of the townhome development that is in the northwest corner of the Shadow Creek Estates development. It's in conformance with the PUD for that parcel, which is an R3 parcel. They've identified 132 townhome lots. Those are within fourplex units on the development, so each building will have four units in it, served by private streets off of a main public street. We've ensured that the private streets do not connect through to another public street, so it's a closed loop similar to the Orchard View Town Homes down by Mackinich, so that's good. Rest of development conforms to our PUD requirements and our other regulations. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Brian, anything noteworthy from P and Z? On this one?
No.
Okay, no. Any discussion or comments from council?
I'll make a motion.
All right. In a second, any public comment? Any further discussion? Very none. Lindsey, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Cool.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Item B is resolution approving Holland Point Preliminary Plat 2. This is another development just south of Beardsley, but it is further east. Hubble is working this one just to the south of the ridge. Luke, I'll turn this one over to you.
Yes, this is a prelim plat 2 for the Holland Point project. It includes the ground on the east end of the development and also includes a little bit of a redesign of the central area. If you'll remember, the central area originally had some cul-de-sacs that kind of backed up to Beardsley. They've gone away from that concept here and are doing more of an angled road. It's on the screen there that Luke Nelson's zooming into. So they've gone away from that cul-de-sac concept. From a staff perspective, we like that a lot better. We don't, we're not going to have multiple cul-de-sacs to deal with from a snow cleaning perspective and all that, and it just, it makes the development a lot cleaner, I think. You're going to have all back of houses backed up to Beardsley, so that'll help as well with what the view might be across there as opposed to some of the side of units. So that's the kind of main difference on that one. They have on the eastern end showing a few more single-family lots than what the PUD originally had, so going with this prelim plat will end up with a reduction in some of the units overall from what the PUD originally proposed for that area.
Awesome.
So it actually reduces the density?
Yes.
Yeah, correct. Yeah. Anything noteworthy from P and Z? Any discussion or comments from council? Or do we have any public comment?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
One second.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. Lindsey, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Cool.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Item C is resolution approving the preliminary plat of Brody's Landing South Plat 2. So Brody's Landing is the development that is south of Warrior Run, right? And I'll turn it over to you again, Luke.
Sure thing. Before we jump into this one, I did want to know, I just checked my phone. I had a text from Steve Mosley with a legacy project. He's having trouble getting on Zoom, but I'm sure. Did he? Okay, great. Okay, I hadn't got, I hadn't seen that through, so I just wanted to let you know that he was on or was trying to get on. Just, you know, sometimes applicants don't show up, and Hubble's always good about showing up for their projects. So Brody's Landing, just before we get too much into this specific item, item C, item D, E, and F are all related to Brody's Landing. This all kind of goes together, so there's kind of a sequential element to these four items. So I'm just going to talk through that real quick, and then we'll hit on what the specifics of this prelim plat is. But so the first item we're considering here is the preliminary plat. That is laying out the street corridors, the single-family lots, a park parcel, the parcel that Mr. Cothe has wanted to retain to do some kind of community center on, and then an apartment parcel. So that's what prelim plat one is showing. We then have the next item, which is item D, which is accepting surety for public infrastructure. We're considering that because the item after that, item E, is a final plat. The final plat is being done to create lot one, which is the apartment parcel, and then an outlot for the remaining development parcel. We're calling that plat two here. Well, there was an original Brody's Landing South Plat one that created an apartment parcel that is not the right size for the project they want to do. So it's, it's technically a repli is what they're doing. So we're still going to have that single-family ground that will be developed per the prelim plat that we approved tonight, but the final plat is leaving it as an outlot, and that's the last item that we'll consider. And then beyond that, I'm sorry, that's not the last item. There's a lot going on here. The last item that we'll consider related to that is a site plan for the apartment complex that they want to locate on plat one. So they're wanting, and why we're doing that surety a couple items earlier, is they're wanting to kind of build that all out together, build, be grading that road and working on that apartment project at the same time. So accepting the surety allows us to approve a final plat that then allows us to approve a site plan so that they can actually go start doing the apartment project and the road at the same time. So there's a lot of detail into that, but that's why we have four items on this one tonight. So to jump.
Can I ask a question before you go on?
Absolutely.
Would you say again what Outlet A is going to be? I just missed that, sorry.
Um.
Or do we not know?
Yeah, so if we're looking at the preliminary plat, Outlet A at the bottom is the detention basin for all of Brody's Landing, and that will be owned by the Association for Brody's Landing, so that'll be privately owned. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And so just to run in to, and stop me if you have other questions, feel free to. The other outlots in this development are Outlet B, which is the area that will be dedicated for parkland in accordance to our parkland agreements that we've had in the PUD. Outlet C, just to the north of there, if you remember when we were approving the PUD originally, Mr. Cothe had talked about this community center that he wanted to put there. He had wanted to do it in the park, and Jim and I had some meetings with Lamar to figure out exactly what he wanted to do, and it just, it didn't make sense to have it located in a city park, what he was wanting to do. So he then worked with this, the developer that was buying it to retain a one-acre piece that he can do his stuff on. So it'll be park adjacent, but it won't be in the park. So that works out well for him. Lot one is the biggest lot down kind of at the bottom. That's where the apartment project will go that we'll consider later tonight. And then we have about 85 single-family lots on the east edge of this. So that's the remaining extension of Brody's Landing, single-family. If you've been out in that area or you remember from previous approvals, we have approved the northern half of Brody's Landing, all that single-family, and that's currently being built out. So this would be the extension of that. When we get the plating in for that single-family, that's when we'll start talking about accepting the park, making sure the parks graded out and developed out the way we want. So that will be the trigger for us to get Outlet B. We don't want to accept that right now as part of this plat because of the fact that they're working away from that, and we don't want to have ground that's not been worked over and gotten into the condition that our Parks Department wants, so.
Okay, so can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Understand. Parcel P and the other one there on the, in the northwest portion? What becomes of those, so I understand?
Parcel P?
Yeah, the way I'm seeing it on my outline. Yeah, that was one of them, and then just dropped down one. Yeah, right there. Those two, can you see where he's marked them up?
Yeah, let me, let me, I get to the right page. I'm on a page that has too much stuff. Okay, here we go. Parcel P, that is, if you remember the Latitude 41 Apartment Project we approved earlier in the summer, that is ground that's already been platted off and and had a project app, so it just stays.
That goes.
Yep. Yep.
That section, then that northwest section, how's that used?
That's part of that as well. That's just part of the legal description that when they were doing this plat, if you can see, it might not show up real well here, but there's like a darker black line that's considered the plat boundary. So this kind of boot-shaped piece is not considered part of that plat because it was split out earlier for that developer that's doing the Latitude 41 project. So, so this, the, these italicized section numbers and stuff are just referencing some of the legal descriptions of that land.
All right, thanks.
Yep.
Other questions? I'm going to ask Brian again. Remarkably smooth. That's a good deal. Okay, any other, okay. Any final questions from council? Any public comment?
I'd make a motion.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. Lindsey, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Livingston.
Yes.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Cool.
Yeah.
Okay, that motion carries. Item D is resolution approving an agreement for surety for public improvements for Brody's Landing South Plat one. Luke and Jim, I'm just going to turn it over to you guys.
Sure. This again is related to the surety for public infrastructure. If we are going to approve a final plat without the roads and sewer and water all built, we have to accept some kind of public surety for the amount that that would cost to build so that we can make sure if they don't follow through on their commitment to build it, we've got the dollars committed that we can go and pull trigger on that. So this is a one, a little bit bigger than what we've done in the past. We have done this with a couple of the water lines that need to be extended for the commercial projects up on Sunset Drive, the daycare, and then the Jones or Johnson dental building. So similar to that, but that was a lot less infrastructure. This is the full road, water, storm, and sewer. So it's a bit more of a substantial, it was in excess of 250,000, was it not, Jim?
Yeah, it was. I guess the only. Only thing I'd say is I'm told that this is, the dollar amount that I have on here is not the predicted dollar amount, but it's actually one and a half times.
Okay.
We want to be a little more careful with the surety agreements to ensure that there's a purpose of Mar really, if we have to step in and do the work, then we can get it done. And we want to make sure that we have enough there.
Good. Good deal. All right. Any discussion comments from council? Or any public comment? Anybody raise your hands or anything? I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second. Lindsey, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Lester.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Cool.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item E is a resolution approving the final plat of Brody's Landing South Plat 2. So because we did the surety, we can go ahead and, and approve the plat prior to it actually being done. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right. Any, anything else, Luke?
No, just want to reiterate what this does is it creates a lot one, which becomes a buildable lot, and then anytime you see an outlot on a plat, that's something that's going to need further subdivision work to be done. So all these other areas that we've identified as outlots, they'll need to come back before commission and council with an actual design for their final. Yes.
All right.
One last thing. We had talked about the creek area down there.
I think it's, it's still on the table as far as how, when we get into more of what happens with that single-family stuff, there is space in that park to run a trail through that, that then could continue down along some of the drainage corridors and stuff. So there is still some, some opportunity to have that discussion. Yes. Yep.
Thank you. Make a motion.
Got a motion.
Second.
A second. Lindsey, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Cool.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Item F is resolution approving the site plan of Brody's Landing Apartments. We need to, do you have anything else on this one, Luke?
I'll just hit on a couple of the details of the actual complex itself. It's two buildings. That would be two, two 30-unit buildings, so that's 60 units, and then two additional 28-unit buildings. So your mental math, 114 buildings, right? 116 units in that. So about in size of most of the complexes we've had proposed or built, same size as the Latitude 41. Legacy Landing was also 120 units. So just if you're trying to visualize in your head, like, what's this complex going to look like, Legacy Landing would probably be a pretty good comparison. And then the other thing, we worked with it a little bit across the street on Latitude 41, but the PUD did include some requirements that the units be front-facing along the, along that main road. So you've got those two units at the front that are along that main street, so kind of help frame that street a little bit. And on the other side will be one of the Latitude 41 projects. It'll be a nice, nice look from the street as far as a kind of walkable, getting buildings closer to the street perspective.
Are these market rate?
Yes, these ones are market rate.
When are they expected to be done? Do you know? Yeah, target date?
That I don't.
Okay, I wondered if they just mentioned.
Yeah, I would assume, you know, they're going to get started here this fall with getting approved on the, the infrastructure, probably do as much grading and stuff as they can. But, you know, by the time, we're getting close to winter with stuff, so you're probably looking, buildings getting done late summer next year. So, yeah.
Anything from P and Z? Okay, any other discussion or questions, comments from council? None, can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second. Lindsey, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Cool.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Item G is a discussion and recommendation on potential development of 1008 North Avenue. Luke, I'll just let you.
Yeah, this one's a little funky, so I'll try not to talk too much about it, but the property across the street from the library, there's an, an older rundown yellow house, and it sits on a pretty big parcel of ground. And we had had the owners of it ask what they could do with it. We did some investigation into the plating history of it, and we found out that there were actually three or actually four lots that were originally platted in Norwalk, as part of the original Norwalk Town Plat, that are still valid lots. So right now, it shows up on Beacon as one lot that's addressed as 1,008 North Avenue, but it's actually three lots that face onto Center Street and one lot on the east end that faces onto North Avenue. The owner of that property is looking to sell it off to someone to develop it out, tear down the house, add some more new units in there. And the concept that they have proposed to us is shown on the following page, which is they're wanting to do two duplexes. The, the, back up real quick, the property is zoned R2, so it allows for duplexes. They're wanting to add two duplexes facing North Avenue and one facing, just one single-family unit facing Center Street. From a staff perspective, we feel like that's a pretty good efficient use of that property. It fits with our zoning and stuff. What we run into is that these lots in this area was platted out so long ago that it's, it doesn't fit our zoning real well. And when we, when we try to run it through the test of should we give it a variance through our board of adjustment, it's really hard to justify that there's a hardship that we should give it a variance. So what we've talked about at staff, and we had this discussion at P and Z as well, is could we develop some kind of infill PUD type chapter? And we discussed that with Jim as well, because right now our PUD language says you have to be 10 acres or larger. So we don't have the ability to go in to a smaller project and try to be creative and finesse some of our setbacks and things to help a project work. So what we thought was, you know, this isn't the only area of town that we've got some kind of funky lots that are going to be difficult to work with, that wouldn't be able to do a PUD right now. A lot of the stuff on the east side of Highway 28 through the diagonal is oddly shaped. There's just several places where we could potentially try to be creative with PUDs to, to make something make sense. We don't think that these, this, this proposal is really, you know, wacky or out there or out of the line. It just, the, the requirement that it's running up against is that corner lots needs to be 20% larger than the normal lot. So by the time you do that and you make lot one there, that's. It, it just doesn't work. So we, one thing we can always do is just say tough luck. That's what the code is. You just have to meet our code and we'll maybe get, maybe one duplex on there and one single family home. You know, that, like, just won't be able to do it. And they might not buy it because it might not make financial sense for them to do that. If we can find a way to be creative by writing a new chapter of our zoning ordinance to allow for smaller PUDs in certain areas, um, that would give us some tools to be able to work with a developer that wanted to do these smaller infill projects. So before we went and spent a lot of work doing that, we wanted to come talk with you all, see if that's a crazy idea and say, what are you doing, Luke? Don't do anymore with that. That's, that's fine if that's your opinion. Or, hey, yeah, that seems to make some sense. So let's go forward and see what that looks like and hold some public hearings and discuss it. So really just trying to get some guidance on what to do there.
I think it's a great idea.
Okay.
It's a, that lot has, uh, it declined, declining geographic height. So it makes it very difficult even to put one building in. There's a lot of discussion about this with P and Z. You didn't actually get a resolate, resolution, did you?
Um, P, P and Z just, their recommendation was that we should look at an infill PUD.
Right.
And so what our, our first step in this whole process was, before we even came and bothered you guys with it, we wanted to see if our P and Z thought we were crazy. And they're like, no, that seems like a good idea. So now what, what we need from council is some direction to, hey, actually go back and do the actual full process. And so, you know, if that's what you'd like to direct us to do, we will start working with that and get it on our next P and Z meeting.
Actually, to be handy, you have the flexibility to be able to, you know, pull something out if you wanted it.
Yeah, this is a perfect example of, it could be blighted very, very easily. More so than it is now. And we could make something very usable out of it.
Yeah. And
And you know, one other comment, in that garage on that property, there used to be a Corvette.
A Corvette?
I just happen to know that. And you might talk to the developer about that.
Maybe see if it's still around. Okay.
That's a poor man's Corvette.
I tell you what, those are, poor man's, collectible, man. Those are collectibles. But no, I, I think it'd be a good idea. I'd like to see you go ahead and see what we can get done.
I think one thing you're gonna see is keep in mind, calling it infill, the reason why we're doing that is because, I wanted to make sure that someone didn't buy a new lot or a couple of lots in a new development and try to bring in and do a little mini PUD there and change things up. We don't want the council and city to keep getting hit with all kinds of requests to reduce that, pass things like that. We didn't want it used as a tool for that. We want it to be used as a tool where there's already development all the way around it. It's an older plat that's been done.
Yeah.
And because of the years and zoning changes, uh,
Kind of like you do a spot zoning kind of a deal. A little bit like that.
Well, it's, except spot zoning is, it's, it's when you might allow nonconforming existing use, like when, you know, or something like that.
No.
But, but it's more when we have something really unique and it can't be changed and it's not self-interested for the current developer or certain type of lot. It's, it's something that we've got an existing thing and, but for being able to do that, you can get optimal use.
And usually you're gonna run into that probably in the older existing part of town.
Exactly, yeah.
Where you got weird.
That's where we would expect.
And, and we'll still always retain control if someone, if someone did try to say, hey, I want, I bought something out in the new Hughes development and let me use your infill PUD. I mean, we always have the, the ability from a city level to say no to that. So, you know, we're under no obligation to allow somebody to do that. So from a staff perspective, we'll always try to direct people the right way.
It'd be easier though for you.
Yeah.
If we had some kind of a
Yes. Yep, yep.
Are there, are there stormwater drainage issues with this lot?
Um, I don't know that we've gotten that detailed.
Stormwater easement that goes, I think it's about a third of the way in from the east. Basically, the pipe coming out of the, uh, library pond, that, that's a catching pond there that was developed. It goes under. And that used to be a big overland trench that went all the way down the right road. And years ago, one did a big project and put a, a storm sewer basically from the, uh, from the library pond.
Yeah.
All the way down south. So, so that does go right through the center of that lot somewhat.
There's a box in there right now, right? Is, is that?
I believe so, yes.
That intake?
I think that box, when, when we were talking with the developer, I thought he said that that was an old well.
I think that's an intake. There isn't, there isn't a well.
Property is a well.
There is a well there. I think I see the well though, as well, you know, also. I don't know. As long as, as long as they can mitigate it, I guess.
Those are things we would definitely look at more closely, like when we were getting a proposal. I mean, we're talking about this because of their proposal here, but we've also not done a lot of review to that because we've pretty much been telling them, no, you can't do it. But here's maybe a way that we can try to put something in place then to, now we can come back and actually have a discussion about how you're gonna do it. So.
Yeah.
Isn't the question before us whether or not we direct you to, to work on, um, the infill, the language to make this kind of thing happen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's a, I mean, I think it's a great idea. I think it gives us a lot of flexibility. I really appreciate you guys thinking a little bit outside of the box.
Oh, I think we just lost Jackie.
Yep, you baited it off.
Must be changing towers or something.
End of the sunset.
Definitely agree.
Come up with ways that we can.
You need any action from us or just?
Yeah, I don't think we need any necessary action.
No, I don't think so.
We don't need us. We just
Make it so. Yeah, make it so. Go for it and do your thing.
All right, so moving on. Item H is a resolution approving agreement of surety for Parkland finalization at the Blooming area. Luke and Jim, I'll go, I'll, I'll let you take this.
So similarly to the Brody's Landing thing, this is related to the next item, which is approval of the final plat for Blooming Heights South. In that plat, the infrastructure is substantially complete. There was one outstanding item, which is making sure that the park gets finalized the way that we want. Robin and I met with their, uh, grading and seating contractor out there last week and talked about what our city expectations are for that. And so this is a, uh, resolution accepting surety to, to ensure that that gets done. Again, it, the issue ends up being that we're outside of some seating schedules and that. So that will help us, uh, in the future, accept that or, or have that park finished out to the condition that parks would expect it to be.
Okay. Any discussion from council? Questions?
Sounds good.
Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Hey, I got a motion and a second. Uh, Lindsay, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
Livingston?
Hi.
She's still frozen.
Frozen. I think she's still frozen.
Lester?
Yes.
There you go.
All right, we'll just say the resolution is, has passed. Okay, item I is resolution accepting infrastructure and approving the final plat of Blooming Heights South Platte 1. So since we did the surety, we can go ahead and approve the final plat.
Correct.
Wayne, is everything in there? Luke, good for you? Okay. Any questions? I think we completely lost Jackie, but no, maybe not. Still in a box. Uh, okay, so any other questions, council?
Give you a motion.
I got a motion and a second. Lindsay, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Cool?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
All right.
We got you, Jackie.
We got you, Jackie.
Four votes.
Okay, good.
It's like Chicago, man.
All right.
I'm, I'm chatting. Yes, yes, yes.
I gotcha. Item J.
Back of the council.
Resolution accepting infrastructure and approving the final plat of Norwalk Orchard View Platte 5. Everything look good to go, Wayne? All right, any discussion, questions, council? Any public comment? And I don't see any. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second?
All right, I got a motion and a second. Lindsay, would you call a roll?
Councilmember Lester?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Cool?
Yeah.
Livingston?
Yes.
Had a question? All right. She's saying, there we go. She thumbs up. That's a yes. Uh, item K.
Yes.
Hey, item K is a resolution, uh, approving the addition of a new commercial incentive called the first in development to the current Norwalk TIF policy. Holly, I'll turn it over to you. Oh, I need to unmute Holly. There we go.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so our existing, our current TIF policy does allow us to do pretty much everything that we're requesting in this, um, sort of addition. So, um, I know it might seem a little bit repetitive, but the reason why we wanted to kind of specifically point this out um, and draw attention to this, um, kind of first in, um, incentive program is so that we have, um, just a really good set of parameters to go out and recruit and help these developers that might be a little bit hesitant to be the first, uh, commercially constructed development in a larger, brand-new, undeveloped area. And all of them that, that we've worked with over the last few years, that's always been their, their biggest concern is if they're the first one into a larger undeveloped area that they're going to sit there for a long time with nothing going on around them. So they, they won't benefit off of traffic. Um, in that sense, their infrastructure costs are significantly higher than anybody else that will come in after them. So we really just wanted to kind of highlight and specify these types of projects that are willing to take the risk and go into these bigger developments because we know it'll spur development and help our growth move quicker. And as everybody knows, it's getting really competitive in the metro area for commercial developments. You know, residential is still just kind of booming and blowing up everywhere, but the commercial developments are getting harder because of COVID and just the different things happening this last year. So we have to just be creative and this will give us a tool to get out there and market a little bit more and promote on the different incentives that we have for new commercial, um, facilities to be constructed.
All right, any questions for Holly?
Looks like a good initiative to me.
Yeah. All right, any public comment? People raise your hand, put it in the comment box. And if not, I would.
Motion?
Enter a motion and a second. Lindsay, would you call a roll?
Councilmember Livingston?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes. Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Item L is a resolution authorizing the outdoor display of merchandise for sale at Amory Pets, ten thirty Sunset Drive. Luke, I'll turn this one over to you too.
Thank you. Uh, this request is from Amory Pets. Uh, they are on a parcel and it currently expanded into the lower level of that, the building on that parcel, um, that's zone C2. C2 does allow for the outdoor display of merchandise, um, in that district. But it does say that it needs specific council approval. Um, so they are requesting to do that, um, utilizing a parking stall that, uh, they view as superfluous to their, uh, their, their, their use for that, that outdoor display. I believe they're wanting to display, um, like, dog, uh, dog houses and dog kennel type things, um, similar like sheds or something might be outdoors of a Home Depot type use. So as part of this request, uh, it's kind of twofold. One, um, approving the outdoor display of that merchandise and then also acknowledging and approving that they would be reducing their parking by one because they would be utilizing that space for their, their outdoor display.
Okay. What questions, council?
I guess, does it seem like it's not problematic to reduce the parking area?
Does, is that staff, I don't think, uh, from the staff perspective and from the, the, um, Amory Pets, uh, business owner's perspective, they're, they're not concerned about reducing it. So we're, we're not too concerned about it from a staff point. And the, the plus side of it is it's, it's just a display merchandise. So if we did become an issue, you know, we could go back and have a discussion with them about, maybe they need to, to, to take that spot back. But in general, from our, our staff opinion of parking tends to be, uh, what the property owner and business owner feels is necessary for their business to be successful. You know, that's kind of a decision that they're making and, you know, there's potential consequences to that if they don't have enough parking, but, uh, potential benefits if they right-size it so they're not, uh, having too much parking.
Hearing none? Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Motion.
I'll give a second.
All right. I got a motion and a second. Lindsay, would you call a roll?
Councilmember Lester?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Cool?
Yeah.
Livingston?
Yes.
All right, motion to carry. Item M, uh, is a resolution adopting revisions and updates to the employee handbook for the city of Norwalk. So these updates have been reviewed by the admin work group, which is, which includes Carrie, I'll turn it over to you.
Thanks. Um, so as you said, the admin policy committee has reviewed the revisions that we've made, as have the department heads. And then, um, the city hired Hopkins and Heedner. Um, we had attorneys Brent Henders and Eric Uftograph, uh, review it. Um, and they, they did take quite a bit of time, I think. Um, with COVID, they had it longer than they wanted to, but, they did review it in detail. We went back a few times with drafts. They really cleaned up the language, not just from a legal aspect, but making the handbook more appropriate. We had a lot of things in it that just didn't belong in the handbook. You know, one example that I used with the admin policy committee was that we had in there that we would offer flu shots. Well, that's not really something that's appropriate for the handbook. So, um, they really helped in cleaning that up. And I feel like we've looked at this for a long time. I feel like I went through this a hundred different times. So I, I do feel that it's a really good representation and what we want our employees to have. Something that resonated with me that the attorney said was that we want the handbook to be like the constitution. You know, we can have policies that would be like other laws and such, but the handbook should be like the constitution so that the employees know what to expect when they work for the city.
What questions do you have?
Just a comment really that the, this looks really good. But the challenge is gonna be, you know, reviewing the shop and making sure it doesn't collect dust, making sure we don't stuff other things in.
I, and I will tell you that one thing that Carrie and I have both done just over the past year, I would say, is as things come up, issues come up, we make notes in there. Hey, the next time we do a review, revisit this section, revisit this section. So we're bringing them, you know, we're keeping track of that over time. Good. And then gradually making changes.
All right. Thanks.
Is the social media policy a part of this?
Yes.
You have a question on that?
I, I don't know. I, I wasn't as comfortable with that one at this point. I think most of it's fine. There were just some pieces of it I wasn't as comfortable with.
You mean the social media policy?
Yeah. The, the rest of the, the rest of the employee stuff is good.
One of the things that came up about that, it was just some, it was more like a caution not to not have that policy. Uh, but it is a quite lengthy policy. So anytime you have a policy, the concept is you're supposed to enforce it. So that was one of the concerns about that lengthy social media policy.
That would be one of my concerns. The other one is that it's, it's pretty, uh, if you do this, then this will ha, I mean, there's, there's, uh, I know, I felt like there was some, uh, there was a lot in there that might infringe on First Amendment rights. And, and I understand why they're in there, but I don't know that they belong in the handbook for the city.
David, would you feel comfortable with emailing myself or Carrie some of those questions? And maybe we can make a little bit of a deeper dive with Dordy?
Uh, yeah, that's fine. I guess it, it, that, that whole social media policy just concerns me a little bit that we're I mean, there, there was just a lot of stuff. I mean, there, there was just a lot of stuff in there that I, I didn't feel was necessarily employee handbook driven. I, I don't know. It felt like an add-on to the employee handbook that maybe doesn't need to be in the employee handbook.
That sounds pretty good. Pretty appropriate to me, but.
Are, are you okay approving this or do you want to table it for tonight?
I, if, if we're voting on it, I'm a no just purely because of the, the social media policy at this point.
Okay.
The rest of the book's fine, but that is just that one piece.
I don't have any concerns about the constitutionality or the infringement of rights with the social media policy. I mean, I don't have any, I, I think the handbook is well done. It's been looked at by. Law firm that'll be specifically hired to address it, Jim Doherty. Did he lose me?
No, you're back. Brent covered some.
Right?
He did review it, yes.
I agree with Jackie. I think we should go ahead and move the, the document. If for some reason we think that there's a change that needs to be done, you know, once those questions have been reviewed with the council, we can always come back and make that one change.
Well, like I said, we could do some additional review with David, too, to see if there's some pieces in there that are a little bit more of a difficult issue.
I guess I, I would make a motion to adopt it.
What he's talking about, I didn't notice that before, but you know, sometimes you can get down a rabbit hole.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so you made a motion to.
Yes, I made a motion that needs a second in order to stay in.
I seconded it.
Okay, thank you. So I got a motion. Yep, I got a motion in a second. Lindsay, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Cool?
Yeah.
Livingston?
Yes.
Lester?
No.
Yes.
All right. Motion carries.
All right.
Uh, item N is a second reading of an ordinance amending and restating Chapter 176 subdivision regulations of the MIS code of the city of Norwalk, Iowa. So we discussed this at our last meeting and the first reading was approved. Any additions, Luke?
No, sir.
Okay, any comments or discussion from council? Hearing none.
Motion.
Second.
All right, I got a motion in a second. Lindsay, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Cool?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Item O is a second reading of an ordinance amending the master plan and rules, regulations and guidelines for the Dobson Plan Unit Development as contained in ordinance 04-08. So at our last meeting, we talked about allowing a couple of duplexes, uh, added into the Dobson PUD, right along Highway 28. Anything additional to add, Luke?
Just a reminder that it was four single-family lots that were turning into four duplex units. So the density and number of units is not changing, it's just the, the unit style.
It was what's, what's allowed to be built there.
Yep.
Yeah, so any discussion or question for council? Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Okay, got a motion and a second. I'll let Lindsay work it out. Would you call the roll, Lindsay?
Councilmember Livingston?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Cool?
Yeah.
All right, I see that thumbs up from Jackie. All right, inquiries and staff updates. Luke Paris, you want to talk about a pilot program for our LMI dollars? Go for it.
Yes, thank you. We've been exploring an idea of creating a property rehabilitation program that would utilize some of our LMI dollars to provide assistance to individuals that met that LMI requirement in keeping their homes in good repair. Our viewpoint to that is like keeping properties in good repair in the city is just a good general thing. It helps keep properties from coming dilapidated, helps keep property values up in neighborhoods. So if we have issues where we had residents that maybe need some assistance with things, we thought our LMI dollars would be a good pool of dollars to use as a resource for that. We're still in kind of the starting process of figuring out exactly what that would look for, look like. But in general, we're thinking primarily exterior type repairs. So roofing, siding, concrete work, windows, you know, other exterior repairs like trim work or soffits or those types of things. Or even going into some assistance with property cleanup. We've had some issues with some homes in the past that we feel like might be good properties to try to work with and be a pilot just to see how it works, use some of those dollars. So really what we're, what we're hoping to get here is some general consensus that, yeah, that's something we should look into. We'll put together a more formal policy and we think we've got at least one property owner and, and we can always put it out to some others as well for that kind of first-year pilot program to see how it would work. I envision it working somewhat similar to how we do the facade program for commercial projects. So the same type of idea, we'd have a pool of dollars. We'd probably cap that at some certain amount and then individuals would apply for that. We'll have to do a little bit more legwork on that. It just, as far as confirming LMI status and all those things. We also wanted to structure it somehow so that we can ensure that our dollars are being spent and then utilized in a way that gets us that, um, that improved property that's going to be improved for a long term. So we don't want to spend dollars and then have two years later more issues with those properties. So some mechanism that, you know, if, if we don't, if we don't see improvements that it's like a forgivable loan. So, you know, you didn't, you didn't do what we asked you to do with it and now we're in a situation, you know, five years later or so on, you know, that it's, it's a different situation than being granted the dollars upfront. And we don't have any way to recoup that if, if things aren't done how we want, so.
I could see this becoming a major time, time will be more valuable than the dollars, I think. A lot of times, I, I'm cautious. I don't want to give them dollars for them to, there's a reason why it hasn't been fixed yet. And I don't want to give them dollars for them to give you out to the contractors. I would like us to pay contractors, whatever the agreement, the supplier, whatever directly. And we have no way to walk this back. If we pay it to them and they waste it, they go to the casino, you're not going to get it back. What are you going to do?
Yep.
What are you going to do?
We'll have to, we, we need to be careful how we structure that because we definitely don't, we don't, I don't believe, and I need to, to formalize some research on that. Luke Nelson had sent me some programs that they've done in Boone. I had looked into some programs they've run out of Des Moines. And the Des Moines one that I researched had been structured as you're applying for a loan from the city and you owe us that money back. But if you're, if for five years, you own it for five years, you keep it in good repair, you do all these things, then at that five-year term limit, it's just wiped clean. And, and then you get it that way. So it's, yeah, so at that point, you have all these conditions that have to be met over those next five years. Because I hadn't even, I mean, that's taking it to extreme. I would sure hope somebody wouldn't take the generosity of the city and go up to Prairie Meadows, but.
Standing there is everything.
I think like the commercial grant, you know, the city doesn't put any money out until the individual has spent the money for the improvement.
But I think that this has to be different, and that's exactly what I was going to say. The commercial grant is drastically different than what we're talking about here. I think that is the problem and why an LMI is needed because they do not have upfront dollars. They cannot. They facilitate, we facilitate all of the backing in order to do it. And that's why I think it's going to need more legwork, more maintenance and oversight. So I'm wondering, just keep this in mind.
Yes, all, all points that we, we have on our list of things that we need to make sure we address, but good.
I like, I like the concept and I don't know if there's a way to look at designing the program and have somebody else. Administer it for us.
I mean, in bigger communities, a lot of times there's a nonprofit that will run something like that. And then the city uses their LMI dollars to fund that nonprofit, then we as a city don't have to be the one doing that. So certainly if there was a group in town that was interested in doing that and we could just, that'd be way easier because it, all we're doing is.
Still, I think we still want to have control, like, like Baker's saying, we still want to have some confidence in those expenditures. And then the other thing is we probably want to limit the scope to some extent or the amount, right?
Yep.
And cap it. And it would probably be a percentage of our LMI dollars. I mean, just off the top of my head, just talking about it.
Yeah.
And, and, but I like the idea. I really do. And I think that would benefit some of our citizens in the community. Benefit the community generally.
We're, we're currently working right now on, on the, uh, property that we're, we're working with the property owner on. They've let us, just contacted some of our local contractors to just give us a really ballpark number so we can get some ideas on like what that would be. Then we can start thinking about like, okay, what amounts are we talking about? Are we talking a $50,000 pool and you cap it at 10? Or do you cap it at 25 and you only do two? Or do you, do you not cap it and you have 100, you know? What level are we going to have every year? And then what amount are we going to give out to each individual? It's something we need to land in on.
Good. I like it. I like the idea, but it's got to be buckled down tight.
Yeah, I'm willing to explore the idea. I'm not sure if I like it yet. I, I'm willing for staff to start looking into it. I'm not necessarily opposed to it, but I kind of think it's just going to depend a lot on the structure and how we, how we give out the money and, and what it's for and all those details that obviously we're not ready to hammer, not ready to discuss yet.
Jackie, do you see this as a hornet's nest?
I do. I have a lot of concerns. I agree with some of the concerns that you raised, which is why I think in theory it's good. I just think we have to be really careful about how we do it. And obviously, we're not at that stage yet. We're just at the, is this something we should look into stage? And so I'm okay with us looking for, looking into it and seeing where it might take us.
I agree. That's well said.
All right. No.
Sounds good. We'll start looking, we'll get some more details and bring some ideas back to you all and how that might structure and try and address some of those concerns that. The same things that you all have mentioned, I think we've identified in staff as things that we need to make sure we're careful when we put stuff together like this.
All right, anything else? Other stuff? All right, Wayne, do you have an update on street condition and funding?
I do, thank you. I'm sure you've all been anxiously waiting for this report. I know every year you get, you get excited about it. So every two years, as you know, the DOT has a contractor come through and analyze our roads. They create this PCI rating included in the agenda statement. There is a map there showing the latest PCI ratings. These aren't the be-all and-all condition of our streets, but it is a tool we use. The van, as it drives through, there are certain areas it won't get a good reading on the street. But like I said, it does a pretty good job of assessing the condition of it. I'll make a note here that the areas, some of these areas in red, like Woodmire Drive, the Norwood, Park Hill, some of these areas we've already addressed late last year, early this year already, so they've been improved. But overall, Norwalk's sitting really well. You see in the agenda statement, our PCI has actually gone up from 2013. And the average across the metro, the PCI has gone down, so we're doing really well. Someone that can be attributed to our new growth, obviously a new road is going to score. And some of it is due to the additional funding council has been supportive and the mayor is supportive of inputting some more dollars into the street infrastructure, which I think that has a positive impact and I think it shows, but the improved PCI. DOT then, or the MPO took this PCI rating and our funding levels and they put it into a pavement management software. And they run a bunch of analysis. Well, they're showing, uh, still with, with the amount of funding we do over 10 years, our PCI still goes down. That is still not enough to main, even just maintain our roads. That's really concerning on my end because it's not talking about improvements or widening or stuff we want to do, you know, like the North Avenue intersection. That's not maintenance. That's a widening and expansion of that intersection. So even on top of maintaining the roads, there's a number of projects that we need to do that are going to be additional, widening Beardsley or widening North Avenue. Urbanizing East 27th from the world are urban. None of those costs are included in that, so that's even additionally on top of that.
So that formula, though, could theoretically give you a rough dollar amount that we would need to have for target every year in terms of road, street maintenance.
For maintenance, it calculates the current condition. It assumes a deterioration level, it assumes an inflation level of your dollars and it calculates how much money you need to spend every year.
Thank you.
And so right now, we've input 1.5 million every year. Right now, it's saying we need to be at 2.25. So $750,000 more per year, that's quite a bit. I think right now, our real use tax is going to go up quite a bit and then we get the new census, that'll take care of quite a bit of that additional number. I think what concerns me moving forward is the big projects. We still have a lot of big projects out there that I'm going to have to get taken care of. I don't have answers for all that yet. I'm just bringing it forward and telling you. It's been great, but we can't take our foot off the gas. We have to spend some more time, like this more money on street infrastructure projects. We're just getting into the CIP, so at that point in time, I'm hoping I identify some key projects, bring it forward and we'll discuss it.
I, just to kind of play off of that and, and I guess advertise for our comp plan. You know, that comp plan process and how we grow, an important part of that discussion is the financial commitment that we make every time we do grow. And what Wayne's talking about is, I mean, that's the key of it, right, is we can grow in lots of different ways. And some ways are going to be more financially solvent than others. And through this comp planning process, we're going to decide what we want the community to be out to 2040. And, you know, that's a, that's part of it. So those decisions we make and the decisions that were made 20 years ago have led us to this point. Those decisions will be important in how we'll be able to address those needs in the future. So. Get off my high horse.
What we discussed tonight, the subdivision improvements, that's huge, you know, requiring, we have higher standards for accepting infrastructure from our developers. That'll go a long ways towards us having not have to spend a lot of money on roads where we shouldn't have to. That's huge. I'm very excited about that. We also included in here some of the, from the recent survey, and Luke, you probably know a little more about the survey, but, citizens of Norwalk, they really, they put a high value on the condition of streets and they kind of had a low, how was that worded? They rated lower compared to other cities of Norwalk size. The citizens of Norwalk rated the streets in a lower condition or rate them lower than other cities would have, so.
In fact, out of all their different criteria or services that they compare to other communities, this was our lowest rating compared to the other communities, the city streets. And consequently, identified as the highest priority for citizens of where they would like the city to focus efforts.
Was that due to Highway 28? Highway 28 is everyone's view of Norwalk streets as Highway 28.
Yes, certainly it could be.
Yeah.
More to come on, except just an update item tonight. That's all I have.
All right, thanks.
Yeah, thanks.
Luke?
All right, I've got a few items. First, the, I'm so used to Luke and it's. The mayor and I had a lunch meeting with Ted Corrigan. In case you don't know, Ted Corrigan is now the director of Des Moines Water Works. And just a good general discussion, there were a couple of key things I thought were valuable to bring up to council. One, I would say is the bad news is, do you remember that cost of service study that we talked to you about and how because of the peaking factors of a lot of the suburbs, we're not paying our way? Well, they're utilizing that cost of service. They're coming back and saying what they need to move forward immediately are some larger rate increases. So they're proposing over the next three years, each year will likely look at a rate increase of around 15%. And Wayne, did I understand correctly that they did take that action?
The Finance and Audit Committee is recommending it. They made the official recommendation on Tuesday night. The board will review it in two weeks.
An advantage for us is that we have been planning for at least a 10%. An advantage for us is that we have been planning for at least a 10% increase. Our growth is also allowing us to buffer some of that so that our citizens don't see a significant increase of 15%. Their growth helps to accommodate for it. So that was one, not the best news. I would say the good news, we spent a lot of time talking about the regional water authority. And that that is a good move for the entire metro. And I said, Ted, five years, where are we at in five years? And he said, we'll have a regional water authority. And then he followed up and he said, we'll probably get good at it in seven to 10 years. So it's, I think that's a positive sign that that we could be heading heading in that direction. Last thing I'll bring up is, and he really reinforced that. About four or five years ago, even prior to that, Norwalk was probably the number one biggest concern for Des Moines Water Works. In terms of the community that was just teetering on danger, not having enough water, not doing the things that were necessary. To keep our community. Safe. I mean, even, you know, fire protection, but just potable water in general. He said today, we're not even close to the top of that list with the changes that have taken place. The things we did with that pump station, redundant power supply, and then now this new 16 inch feed that's coming from the west. Said those things, we are now off their red light list and. Pretty good. So is overall a good meeting? Is there anything I missed that?
Yes. So so one of the things they talked about. During the during the summer months, there is a lot of peaking going on because of irrigation. And is there, you know, we need to look at ways to be able to. Disincense a little bit. I hate to use disincentive as a word, but. To irrigation, especially when we are starting to get into situations like we were at the end of August where. It was, there was a possibility that. We're going to have to, the whole metro area was going to go on a boil order because of the usage of of water. So you know, what I would like to ask you guys what we would think about. Adding and part of the part of an ordinance and it had probably going to water water ordinance somewhere to to talk about. If you are going to have a sprinkler system, you have to have irrigation meter installed. Not be for any new homes.
I think we already have that. You couldn't afford, you couldn't afford it to not have an irrigation.
No, we do not.
I mean, no one in their right mind would do that.
So we had, we we have recently, this summer, there was a, there was a gentleman. There was a gentleman that has purchased a home, put in a sprinkler system, did not put.
$600 a month bill.
Bill for one month was over 2,000.
Okay, I take it back. There's crazy people.
So but 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 with 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 the requirement to add the irrigation meter in. You know, we could, we could put some variability to the irrigation rates. To that, if if we are getting up to where we we're going to have to do water restrictions, we can jack up the rates a little bit. And put that into the ordinance as well.
Or make them graduated rate. So if you are going to water every three days, it's different. We have some people that's literally every single day, no matter what.
Well, man, or even if it's raining out there. So you are, are you guys?
I think it's a good, I think it's a good idea.
Yes, I agree.
And take a look at some kind of a percentage, like an overuse, you know what I mean? Where the.
It could get pinny. Yeah. And then I think is what you have to do. Every additional level gets a little more pricey.
Right.
David, what do you think? Yeah.
Not talking.
Right. So what were you going to say? I was going to comment that. A key part of this, I really, it's not punitive.
You can't make it.
You could, right.
I used the wrong term.
I I understand what you're saying, but from what we heard on that cost of service study that Des Moines Water Works did. What you're doing is you're simply asking the people that are causing the need for all this water that doesn't get used in the middle of winter. But they still have to carry that cost.
They should bear the.
They should bear the expense.
Totally agree.
It's a, it's really a fairness issue for all those that don't have irrigation and maybe are conserving a little bit more. We want to buffer their cost increase.
Right.
To mayor, if I may, to add. We used to have a flat rate for builders. They paid like a $400, I think it was, flat rate when they got their building permit. They have water. We thought that was a good way to go since. It's just water, the new sod and not pay for it. That has since moved away. So any permits issued in 2020, the builders are now paying for that water.
Great.
But we did have some carrying over from 2019 that got away with a lot of free water.
The first sod bills can be 1,500 bucks with an irrigation.
Oh, his mic's unmuted, but he's still not talking. I will move on. So go ahead, Nat. Can you go ahead and look at that?
Yeah, yep. We'll add that to our list of. Irrigation.
Separate from commercial users that it gets cheaper as they go up.
Right.
Residential, it would actually get more expensive.
More expensive as you go up.
Or of an inclining.
More stable. They're going to be, the commercial is going to be more like a constant use. Whereas the residential, our problem is a peak.
Yep, I agree.
Right. Okay, good. And and require, put a requirement on there of an irrigation meter, new new home builds. Well, even maybe, maybe if if do they have to have a permit to come in and put in a new irrigation?
Yes.
Yes.
So if they come in to, so if you're retrofitting your house, they got to put, they got to put the irrigation meter at the same time.
What's the cost of an irrigation meter? It's gotten real expensive.
The meter depends on the size, three quarter inches, $300, three, one inches, $350 just for the meter.
And then you got to install.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Think about that for the white flower bed.
Are you saying any new construction home or just any home that's going to have a sprinkler system installed?
I think any home that's going to have a sprinkler system installed needs to have an irrigation meter.
So what about the homes that don't install an irrigation or a sprinkler system, but still. Water 60,000 gallons a month.
The thing is, they're paying sanitary sewer.
They're paying sanitary sewer on it. So I I don't know that we can.
You could probably inform them and offer that. Yeah.
You could still implement some kind of an inclining rate, even on residential, if they hit a certain amount of that. Right.
Builders.
Because you.
Yeah, and 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 that's something Luke and I talked about is that, okay, you could, you could take your rates from October to March. And average them. And then if you are a certain.
Right.
Certain standard deviation away from that average during the summer months, that then you, you, we know that you are sprinkling. So increase the rate.
Work on that and bring back some ideas.
Alright, sounds great. Thank you.
The next item that I have, this is more of a, I don't think you can call it an editorial comment. I sat through the last P and Z meeting and one of the items on the agenda that will be coming up to council is a request for some development outside corporate limits. And it's not a big item. It may not cause much of an issue with council. It may go right on through. But the main reason I wanted to talk to you ahead of that is just to simply reinforce. How difficult it is for a city to manage growth and grow smart. When we do have some of these pop up developments that happen just outside of corporate limits. The one being proposed, just on the other side of the road of where a potential road could go through. Now, I don't know if it would or if that's logical. But even things like a transportation corridor or a location. Hey, there's a sanitary sewer nearby that would make this land easily serviceable. With a more. Different types of density that would fit in for city services. So I'm just bringing it up to have you think about that ahead of time and and just understand. Some of the difficulties that creates for the city down the road as we try to grow effectively.
Is that, that should be reflected in.
Correct.
Those different items, I would look for their recommendations to reflect some of that, knowing all the. Parameters.
The last item that I have, in fact, I don't know, it may be better for Tony Belizzi or even Wayne to bring this up. Tony, when it gets around to you, I'm kind of hoping that you'll give a little update about that sewer odor and the smoke testing that you did.
I can do that.
Okay, thanks, Tony. That's all I have.
Okay. Brian. Lindsay?
Uh, nothing.
Alright, Robin.
Well, the highway 28 crossing is almost done. We have the northeast corner. We still have to put a a crossing signal on that. And then unfortunately, one of the, or I guess fortunately, because we're still in the middle of the project. One of the sidewalk or the trail panels has sunk. And so they're going to have to replace that and build that up a little bit. So other than that, I have nothing.
Alright, thank you. Jackie, you still there?
I am still here. Yep. I just, I just have two things and then I'm sorry, I got to get off. One is the high school football team is playing in their first state playoff game tonight. Good luck to them. I think it's still going on. Two is, I just want to, first of all, thank. I'm just really, really glad, really fortunate to be in this city that I'm in. I know there was some. Unrest today at the high school with some protesters and I know from what I understand from some of the student reports. The chief for other police and DT and school administration got yelled at by some adults that I'm not even sure are part of our community. I'm just really grateful for the way that we continue to handle. Ourselves as a city, the way that our staff handles themselves and the representation that we put forth. I think continually, everybody in the city puts themselves in a really good light and I'm very thankful for that.
Well said. Alright.
Thank you.
Bosch. Oh. There you go, Jean.
Thank you. Good evening. I just wanted to share another quick happy story from the library. As I mentioned before, we are offering take and makes instead of our in-person programming due to the pandemic. And we posted about a couple of the take and makes that we have this morning. And we almost immediately got a message through Facebook Messenger from a mom and she's got. Three preschool and early elementary age children and they're all under quarantine. And she asked if they would be able to come and park in the lot, call and let us know that they were there and if we could bring out the kids. Because it would really mean a lot for them to have something to do. And so we were able to meet that request. So I thought you might like to know that. We we continue helping people and especially those who have some extra needs right now. That's it.
Thank you. Uh, Holly.
Yes, so today Luke Nelson and I gave an update for the city to the chamber. And in preparation for that, I I went back and just re kind of crunched some numbers. We do this every once in a while to show, show you guys and show the city. Unity, you know, where we've come from over the last three years, specifically for me anyway, with the commercial development. And it's just really impressive every time I go back and look at those numbers and just like Jackie kind of said, I'm really proud to be of this. Part of this community and be a part of the the development team. But I'm just for a couple of numbers to throw back out there at everybody in case you forgot. So over the last three years, we've added 30 new businesses to Norwalk. Built 16 new commercial facilities, brand new ground up commercial facilities. Which added 475,000 square feet of new commercial space. And then an additional 60 million in new commercial value just from those new commercial facilities. So not additions, expansions, not even residential, just the new commercial. So I like to try to keep that in mind when the community continues to say, we need this, we need that, we need this, we need more commercial. They're getting it and they've got it and they'll continue to get it. So just just keeping those things in mind. Everybody's done a great job. I'm bringing that to town. As far as current projects and things that we're working on, progress with the Hughes Century Crossing. And the city center, things are falling into place just beautifully there, since you all approved at the last meeting to let us hire a design consultant. So we've already met several times with kind of our internal group to make sure that what the city has relayed to us in terms of. Desire for what happens in the whole Century Crossing area and the city center that we relay that to the consultant. And then he can get to work with bringing back a few options for us to review. So things are going really well there. Alice Place Senior Apartments still planned to open sometime in the spring or summer. And then Holland Farm Senior is also planning to open in March and they'd like to do some form of a grand, kind of a grand opening. That'll be exciting. Still working with Culvers, that's going well. They're just trying to lock up the land so that we can then move into negotiations for the development agreement, which will pretty much look the same as the last Culvers Development Agreement. Then Cobblestone Hotel, things again are just moving along really well there. They're getting all of their. Ducks in a row. They've got a consultant or a firm that's hired to do the soil, a geotech report. For the road and the hotel parcel. So they'll be drilling here in the next few weeks. They've got their engineers working on road and site plans that'll also be turned in in a few weeks so that we can then. Start plugging in the estimates they'll receive from that into the development agreement and maybe be able to move into that in December. And then the sports campus and city center project, that's also moving forward really well and meeting with them again tomorrow. And they are going to bring forward, I asked them for a few options of how the sports campus could be structured between. City developers and the school. So they're going to have a few options to just review and then we'll hold another meeting next week with a few more city people. And Robin to kind of start drilling down a little bit better. And then last would be that the Kosovo peace and trade deals that were signed a few weeks ago. The consulate has asked us to be maybe a little bit more involved in how we move forward because of this new initiative and the. Incentive program for economic development that's coming from Washington DC as a national initiative on the US. So we really want Iowa and then our kind of Des Moines and Norwalk partnership to be the front runners and the leaders in this in this program. So it's pretty exciting. There's a lot of opportunity now in that whole region. So it's not just a Kosovo thing anymore. So I'm pretty excited to get that in front of our businesses. That's it.
Alright, thank you. Chief Staples.
Not a whole lot, just after a lengthy period of time, Assistant Chief Westfold was back for a meeting. He was. Very much needed today. That's what I'll do that.
Thank you. Chief Coburn.
Yes. We were able, after the last council meeting and the approval, to gain access to our new MCI trailer. We will, we were able to gain possession of that from the Clive Fire Department. So we've got that back here in Norwalk. And we've got it placed into service and I have had many. Positive comments from metro chiefs about having that trailer positioned near the airport and. In a good position for them to be able to dispatch it in in many different areas. So that's good for us. And with that, that's all I have.
Alright, thank you. Tony.
Thank you, mayor. Just a quick update on the. Mackinac Sports Complex, Complex East Parking Lot Improvements Project. Contractors got most of the paving improvements done on that now. If you haven't drove drove by it, you're certainly welcome to. It's looking, looking real nice. You can see the. Shape of the parking lot now. We've just got a little bit more concrete work to do, some sidewalk work, a little bit of grading and striping for the parking lot. So that should be done. Relatively quickly and and we're certainly in need of the space over there. That'll generate about 100 and. I believe 135, 140 parking spaces as well as some additional ADA parking spaces for the complex. So great improvement there. And then this week, we did some smoke testing in the in the Windflower Park neighborhood area. That was a result of our. Um, uh, and then, uh, this week we did some smoke testing in the, in the Windflower Park neighborhood area. That was a result of, or, or prompted by. By some complaints the city received and kind of tough timing with, with, with these complaints, but these complaints were, had to do with odors that, that specific residents had. Uh, in their basement areas and with the, you know, ongoing issues that we're having with the WRA, uh, work on the, on the main outfall sewer and diverting. Uh, flow into Norwalk, you know, we've kind of got two things going on at once. So. It, it made it difficult to differentiate between, you know, issues that, you know, potentially private issues they were having in their homes versus the. The issues we're having with odors in the atmosphere as a result of what the WRA is doing. So if you haven't been involved in any smoke testing, basically what we do is we entrain, in training. Odorless, non-toxic smoke into the sanitary sewer system through the manholes. And typically that's used to identify. Infiltration and inflow extraneous water sources that are getting into that sanitary sewer system so that we can. Find those sources of water that's not supposed to be getting in there and do those type of repairs, but it can also be used to identify. Issues with residential or private plumbing as well, you know, so in this case, uh. Uh, make a long story short, the, the complaints the city received in this area, there was about four, four issues in four separate homes. We were able to identify. Uh, the, the sources or the reasons for those odors and they all turned out to be private issues associated with, uh. Uh, with private plumbing somewhere, uh, floor drains that were dried, traps were dried up, you know, so they were allowing odors into their homes. Uh, another location was actually a sump pump service line that wasn't used. It was connected to their sanitary sewer service. And with just, uh, free flowing air into a basement of a house. Um, and, and another one was a couple of toilets that, that, uh, the, the wax rings weren't sealed on the bottom of the toilets, allowing, uh. Odors into the first floor in the basement of a house. So, uh, so interesting. The positive thing was we were able to identify all those. Uh, areas that the city received complaints in this area and they turned out to be private issues. So. That's all I have.
Tony, thanks for doing that so quick for us too. We appreciate it.
You bet.
Also get that BK twenty, they did a good job out there.
Great. All right. Thanks, Tony. Ed?
Um, no sir, just, uh, an appreciation for the staff. From the job that's been done. Uh, there were, you know, different events that happened here recently and it was well handled and. You know, you, you appreciate a staff and things are going well. But you really appreciate a good staff when things aren't. And that would be my comment.
All right. Thank you. Uh, just as a note. Uh, Jackie had to drop off and then, uh, David Lester also dropped off just, just before Tony started talking. So. We actually no longer have a quorum, but since we are just doing this half course, I think we're just going to finish up.
So. Can adjourn.
Oh, no.
We don't have to adjourn. No.
I don't have any good point.
Don't have anything. Yeah. Just be aware of, for, for my side, just be aware that, uh, city manager appraisal forums are going to be coming your way pretty soon. So, all right.
Get that sharp pencil out.
And watch out for all the little ghosts and goblins out trick or treating this year. So with that, I'm going to call this meeting adjourned at seven thirty-five PM. Thank you.
Great.